Today by former city councillor and soon to be OSKA head, Ma'am Virgi Albau, ma'am, welcome sa among 11th regular session. It's an honor for you to be here. Naapudiretong mga bisita gikan sa... Matanang Calzada? Nell? Ah, Pasada, Pasada, no? Si Kagawad Janel, from Barangay Don Martin Marundan. The 11th regular session of the 8th City Council is now called to order. Please rise for the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Masagnay, followed by the National Anthem, Provincial Hymn, and City Hymn.
With bow or head and presence of God, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we are gathered today in order to discuss things that are for the good of our people. Heavenly Father, we trust that you give us strength, to give us courage, so that it can better serve our people. All of this we ask in Jesus' name, amen. And Father, Son, we all pray, amen.
Bayang magiliw, pelas na silang nanan. Alab ng puso sa tip-tip mo'y buhay. Lupang hinirang, dulaan ka ng magiting sa manlulupig. Di ka pasisiil sa dagat at bundok, sa simoy at sa langit mong bogao. May dilag ang tula at awit sa paglayang minamahal. Ang kislap ng watawat mo'y tagumpay na naghiningling. Ang bituwing nag-araw niya, kailan pa may dimang didilim. Lupa ng araw ng walhatit pagsinta, buhay ay langit sa feeling mo. Aming ligaya napag may mga api ang mamatay ng dahil sa'yo.
Lupa lang na si ganun ng maki, opugensya na minamahal. Sang suba nga ng Davao. Batwa ka na madayaw, ya na guyon niyang utaw. Malipayon kay balangga ka ng Diyos. Matabayang kalupaan mo, yang tanong mapungahol. Dagat mo mga suba, madayayang hisda, kabuhian ka wilihan ang kanan. Umahan na Davao oriental, langit mo mapawaay. Yang kaputayan, yang kapatagan, maya maday magandahay. Mas dihain pa kami kumakto, kami muuli anikan mo. Garbu dami na Davao enyo, yang patsi. Lupa lang na si ganun ng maki, yang ya manbo di makati. Sangkat kayang, sangkat katag, sangkat agat ang kawakayun. Magka naktiyang, magjeritay, kayang palibot na bendahan. Sangkat jawan, yang sangmukat, iya iyan yarimahan. Taga mati mati na pagu, taga mati mati na dadu. Taga mati mati na huru, yang taga mati mati na. Taga mati mati na daru, taga mati mati na manu. Taga mati mati na huru, sa Diyos labang magkagagahu. Taga mati madayaw, taga mati mati.
Thank you, dear, sa Madayaw TV. If you notice, mas dakot na atong TV today sa session hall. Next week, the smaller one, ibutang na to sa may tunga-tunga siguro, so the councillors in the back can also see. Anyway, please proceed with the next item, Mr. Secretary.
Roll call, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Please proceed.
Honorable Edmond Dupang Jr., Honorable Roelio Pabio, Honorable Zedefinces Campos, Honorable Tara Marie Rabat Gaeta, Honorable Jose Paulo Luis Rabat, Honorable Raoul Antopuesto, Honorable Jerome Deeng Hirang, as informed by staff will be coming later. Honorable Francisco Bardón Jr., Honorable Sandra Paul Cantera, absent. The Honorable Deeng Hirang is present. Honorable Edgar Valera, Honorable Daniel Makaubos, Honorable Felicity Masagnay, Honorable Tomas Cebilleno, Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girabat.
Present.
Cora, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Please proceed with the next item.
Reading and consideration of the previous minutes of the regular session dated September 9, 2025.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any corrections with their previous minutes? If their non-honorable campus is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I have here a copy of the minutes from September 9, 2025, 10th Regular Session. If there are no corrections to these said minutes, Mr. Chair, consisting of 58 pages, I move for the adoption of the minutes, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campus for the adoption of her previous minutes dated September 9, 2025. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Pabio. If there are no discussions or objections, the previous minutes are hereby adopted. Please proceed with the next item.
For question hour, we invited Mrs. Virginia M. Albau for today's session.
Thank you. Please read the letter of invitation.
Office of the Sangguyan Pangusod, September 9, 2025, Mrs. Virginia M. Albau. Dear Madam, As manifested by Honorable Raoul M. Antopuesto, the Sangguyan would like to invite you to its regular session on September 15, 2025, at 2:30 PM at the City Council Session Hall, relative to your confirmation as head of the Office of Senior Citizens Affairs, this city. Thank you so much for giving this matter your cooperation and utmost attention in the interest of public service. More power and galvez. Yours, the Secretary of Sangguyan Pangusod, noted by our City Vice Mayor.
Thank you to properly facilitate question hour. Honorable Campus is recognized.
Mr. Chair, to properly facilitate our guests from the Office of the Senior Citizens, I move for the suspension of House rules, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campus for the suspension of House rules, seconded by all the members. Hearing no objections, House rules are now suspended. Let us all welcome former city councillor, Mrs. Virginia M. Albau. Ma'am, the floor is yours. Welcome po.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
To our presiding officer and all the members of the 8th City Council. A pleasant afternoon again. And I would like to say so happy to be with this council again and after all those years. You have a very nice and new session hall. Congratulations.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Okay. I came here because of the message sent by the Honorable Secretary, Jovi Mabini, and in serving the people, especially now, the senior citizens where I belong. So, so happy to serve the people again through the Office of the Senior Citizens Affairs. So, I'm still and now studying the Commission guidelines on how to run the OSKA office. And I already had sent a letter to our Chief Executive, the Honorable Mayor, Mayu Joel Almario, giving her the information what the office needs. Actually, the first, and I considered it a priority, is to recognize and acknowledge the senior citizens organizations of the City of Mati. Kay wa pagyutay, senior citizens organization nga naacredit din hi sa Sangguyan. So, wa pagyut na siya lay official. So, in this line, I also would like to request the Sangguyan to please help the Federation of the Senior Citizens for their accreditation. Because I have read the requirements of the Sangguyan for the accreditation, the list of accreditation requirements, which I am pretty sure nga. Diliyut ka ayaw maanunisa mga seniors, the new Federation officers. So, if the Sangguyan, especially the support staff be dead by the Honorable Jovi Mabini, to please help them. Okay. And as of now, as what I've said, the priority is the accreditation of all the senior citizens organizations, including the Federation officer, the Federation. And the building where we are now is also, we also need a local ordinance recognizing the center and its purpose. I will send an official letter to the Honorable Jovi, through the Honorable Jovi to our presiding officer, the Honorable Vice Mayor, regarding the objectives of the center. Okay. And we are still on process on making the vision and the mission and the goals set. The objectives was set by the Commission on Senior Citizens. And we are now making the vision and the mission based on the set objectives of the Commission on Senior Citizens. And we will also have a strategic planning with the Office of the DSWD, the CSWD, and the Commission on Senior Citizens for the improvement, the development of all the senior citizens in Mati. I think that's all, Mr. Chair. And if, because this morning, there was one man who has requested me because of his complaint that he was delisted by the local pension. But we received a memorandum. I already had a copy. And this was dated July 10 this year, that all those who are receiving pensions, GSIS or whatever, will be delisted. And he has a letter for the Vice Mayor. And he doesn't conform with the local ordinance made by this body, a deformer. Because he also needs daw the 500 pesos per quarter. Now, it's not easy to communicate with seniors, I admit. Because the problem is, kung usahay, di kaita madungog, then di kaita masamtan. So, ang iyan na lang last nga hangyo, kung pwede daw, nga mapasa og resolution or ordinance, kani nga Sangguyan nga para daw mabalik sa listings, bisan pag nag-receive sila og pension, so ako lang ang ipaabot. So, that's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you. And good afternoon to everyone.
Thank you po, Ma'am Virgi. Again, thank you, ma'am, for your time here today. Thank you for your detailed presentation on your immediate steps to be taken as the head of the Office of the Senior Citizens Association. The Sangguyan will comply to your requests. At this point, let us, thank you po, ma'am, na giklaro ninyo na may memorandum yet coming. If you're a pensioner, delay ka-qualified sa 500 honorarium per month, no?
Yes.
That's also what the previous Office of the Senior Citizens told me when that person wrote a letter asking my office, why is that included? Salamat sa pagklaroan na, ma'am. And I hope the other listeners or viewers online, that's also clear to them unta, para may inform po'd sila.
Even the barangay officials.
Yes po, yes po. At this point, we'll entertain questions from the members. Honorable Antopuesto, by the way, Ma'am Virgi, Honorable Antopuesto is the chairperson on Agrarian Reform Cooperative and Livelihood. He will assist the accreditation for the senior citizens.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And to our distinguished guests, I'm very much thank you for this afternoon, that this is our first time since 1997. You offered me to run as a municipal councillor. And this time, I am now a city councillor.
Yes, congratulations.
And this time, I have, under the Committee of Good Governance, I have i-ano, iitas na, I pass a resolution for your confirmation of your appointment. I have a question for you, ma'am. How old are you?
Happily, I'm 73 years old pa.
Pa, okay. Ma'am, sa pagdawat nimo, because this is a senior citizens organization, so I think most of our age, of your age, brother. Merio, nanay sakit-sakit, nanay kaya pa ba, iman na to ang almost 50,000 senior citizens in the City of Mati?
Yes, kayang-kaya. Actually, the first time I answered our Honorable Mayor, diliyut kuunta, pero I was sitting beside my son, Father Bernard, but he told me, kinsan akma si Mayor, ayaw yut pagbalibad. Minsras tagaan ka sa Ginoo, maayong lawas, hala, sige lang, serbisyo lang sa imong gusto. And now, I find it that I'm really very alive after serving the Office of the Senior Citizens.
Okay, ma'am, thank you. This is a very, ano, swerte ang taga Mati na we confirm you this today as a head of the OSKA. So, your manifestation there is 'yung mga problema ng senior citizen, 'yung ibang mga benefits, no? I assure you that I am representing, even though I am the Vice Chairman of the Committee on Social Welfare, but I try my best to address all your requests and I ask also to be our partner so that all the needs of our senior citizens maadres na to with the support of this Honorable August Buddy. That's all, and congratulations in advance.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Raoul Antopuesto. Actually, Councillor Sheena was at the office last September 9 during the meeting of the senior citizens. Because we requested her as Chairman of the Social Services. We requested her presence together with the freelance for all the Federation officers.
Thank you, Ma'am Virgi. The request to study the resolution or ordinance that would amend the previous ordinance will be referred to the Committee on Social Services to Honorable Campus. Kung, number one, kung pwede ba magbuhat of local ordinance na bisan nakadawat og pension, matagan gihapon og allowance monthly.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions, Honorable Campus? Followed by Honorable Makaubos.
Hello, ma'am. Good afternoon. Well, first and foremost, I am very happy na ikaw sa senior citizens karoon because mailha, nagimuha ang age, nagradiate gihapon ang youthful glow. And with you there, when I visited the Office of the Senior Citizens, very light ang environment, everybody was happy. So, makabaluka kung maayong ang leader ang usa katao, kung ang mga tao sa sulod sa iyang opisina, malipayon po'd, ug ang mga bisita, welkamo at to sa iyang opisina, ug ang mga bisita, di mahadlok mo tong tong sa government office. Maong, thank you kaayo for being there. And we are very proud na you answered the call of our city mayor na ikaw ang malingko sa Office of the Senior Citizens karoon. Salamat. And with that, ma'am, your request for recognizing and acknowledging the senior citizens organizations, tabangan mo ni Consiro, Raoul Antopuesto. With that, and with regards to the local ordinance we're visiting and the review of the senior citizens quote nato di ripod sa Mati, if it's okay with you, we will sit down or we will have, we will call for a committee hearing together with our Vice Chairman, Consiro, Raoul Antopuesto also, na maghearing ta, and we will sit down together, together with our city legal. Kay basi naapod mo'y gusto na i-amend or small changes or big changes, what have you, sa ato ang entire ordinance. Kay medyo outdated na gudshano. I believe the city ordinance was dated way back 2019 pa. And the rate as well is kind of behind na gud compared to other cities in Mindanao, not only Mindanao in the Philippines, but I believe kaya, because in Davao, the ordinance of Davao for the senior citizens, they were still allowed to receive the local allowance, even if they are receiving pensions. Because one of my family members is sa Davao nagpa-member, although taga Mati. Dito siya nagpa-member kay tungod sa Davao, ginadawat nila maskipag nagkadawat og pension og SSS. So, it's kind of sad na a lot of taga Mati chose na magpa-member sa Davao kay mas better ang services didto as a social citizens na kung tutuusin, kaya manong takayo nato di ri sa Mati. And I'm very happy that you brought it out actually, because I requested the Federation last time to lobby this concern in the Sangguyan because I couldn't act on it, but if there was no valid complaint. So, now that you are there, I am very grateful that you have lobbied this one because actually, dili lang ni karoon nga mulo sa atong senior citizens. It has been a complaint for, I think, five years na gud. And then, there was no proper complaint lobbied because they were, I don't know, what's the reason? Personal reasons they have na mahadlok sila magreklamo. But now that you are there, I am very grateful and rest assured that we will be reviewing this thoroughly and we will do our best para mapaburan nato ang ato ang mga senior citizens di ri sa ciudad sa Mati. I am looking forward for more partnerships and a happy three years nga ato ang pag-serve sa senior di ri sa Mati. And also for my colleagues here in public service, the senior citizens also will be celebrating their senior citizens month on October, katapusan. So, other than the unified celebration, there would also be a celebration in each barangay on different times. It would be much appreciated if most of my colleagues can come and visit din to the events of the senior citizens sa ato ang isig kinaiya ng mga lugar. Kay I still strongly believe that although we are in a modern era, kailangan gihapon na to tagaan og value ang ato ang mga senior as head gihapon of households and communities di ri sa atong ciudad sa Mati. And with that, thank you so much to the Office of the Senior Citizens. Thank you so much, Ma'am Virgi.
Thank you, Councillor Sheena. And yes, it's true, by October, October 1 to 7 is the elderly week. And the whole month of October is the month, elderly month for all the seniors.
Thank you, Ma'am Virgi. Thank you for updating us, no? Honorable Makaubos.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. As a member of the dual citizens organization, ma'am, I belong where you belong. Of course, I'm very thankful and I would like to congratulate you, especially sa imuhang pag-update sa mga ginahimo sa ato ang senior citizens. Isalamang ang pinakaimportante is mutagaan na to gigayon sa remaining days or remaining years sa ato ang mga senior citizens na naay usah kaehin siya nagpangga sa ila. That is the more important. Let them feel that there is an agency or an organization that love them so much. Thank you, ma'am, and congratulations.
Thank you, our ABC president, Captain.
Thank you, Honorable Makaubos. Are there any more questions from the members? If there are none, if there are none, ma'am, we'd like to thank you for your time here today. And we in the Sangguyan feel lucky that a former member of the Sangguyan put is now with us heading our OSKA office. A few minutes recess is declared. Ma'am Virgi, mag-imbita mire for a photo opportunity. Thank you. Resume. We are still under suspended House rules. Honorable Campus is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move that the House rules be reinstated, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campus for the reinstatement of House rules, seconded by all the members, hearing no objections. House rules are now reinstated. What's the next item, Mr. Secretary?
Privilege our reports, observations.
Thank you, privilege ours upon us, reports, observations. Honorable Antopuesto.
Again, Mr. Chair, good afternoon and to all my colleagues here in this Honorable August Buddy.
Good afternoon.
Yes. This is a representation, would like to appeal to this August Buddy for the consideration regarding the Communication Number 107-2025 for re-accreditation of Pasada Sakaliya to the Federation of City of Mati Incorporated to allow this representation to present the representative and aid and state association who applied for re-accreditation with the local government of Mati, who are also presented in our today's regular session. That's all, Mr. Chair. And I would like to call, please allow me to call the presence of this, the presence of this group. We have Barangay Kagawad Janel Sermonda of Pasada Kaliya. We have Nerius Febre, Federica Sumambot, Alan Auxilio, and Fidel Canoy. Mr. Chair, this is the group. Then I would like to assure to this group that the council will tackle for their accreditation of their association.
There is a motion by the Honorable Antopuesto. Others are request- Others a request by the Honorable Antopuesto that Communication 107 be tackled under unassigned business, under suspended House rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. A few minutes recess is declared. May we invite the members sa Pasada? Ms. Resup, we are still under privilege. Are there any more requests by your members? Honorable Rabat, followed by Honorable Rabat Gaeta.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to my colleagues.
Good afternoon.
First things first, I would like to congratulate the Mati Water Sports Association for sweeping the competition. They overall champions during their competition held in Thailand for the Krabi skimboarding competition. And I would like also if we can invite them to come here sa next session so we can actually see them in person, get their autographs and everything else.
Thank you. Please take note, Mr. Secretary, if there are no objections.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Please proceed. Thank you, Honorable, that's it? Honorable Rabat Gaeta.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have here Communication Number 106 coming from the local chief executive. This pertains to the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Environment and Natural Resources Region 11 on the establishment of the automated weather station within the Mayor FGR Park and Baywalk. May I request that this communication be tackled and discussed under unassigned business, under suspended House rules, Mr. Chair? Thank you.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Rabat Gaeta that Communication 106 be tackled under unassigned business, under suspended House rules. Should be near, should there be no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Privilege ours still upon us. Are there any more requests by the members, from the members? Few minutes recess is declared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to all. This representation as the chairman of the Committee on Tourism would like to discuss the Resolution C, a resolution institutionalizing the Filipino brand of service excellence to all government offices and tourism-related establishments in the city of Mati, to be discussed under unassigned business, under suspended House rules.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Pang that proposed Resolution C be tackled under unassigned business, under suspended House rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, mister.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Ah, okay. Please, please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Honorable Bardon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is in line with, in line with the Resolution Letter E and Letter B that I would like to manifest to all members of the august body that this resolution will be tackled under unassigned business, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Bardon that proposed Resolution B be tackled under unassigned business, under suspended House rules. If there are no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Ted, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you. Are there any other requests under privilege? Excuse me, for clarification, proposed Resolution B and A? A and B, correction. Proposed Resolution A and B tackled under unassigned business, under suspended House rules. Please take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. If there are no more requests under privilege, please proceed with the next item.
No proposed ordinance for first reading. Proposed Resolution Letter A authored by Honorable Bardon to be discussed under assigned business suspended House rules. A resolution directing the establishment of barangay peacekeeping action team monitoring outpost in identified high-risk areas to support the implementation of Ordinance Number 645 CS 2025 anti-drug racing ordinance of the city of Mati prescribing minimum standards, staffing, operations, coordination, reporting, and funding mechanisms therefore. Proposed Resolution B authored by the Honorable Bardon, a resolution adapting and enforcing the Regional Development Council Resolution Number 9 Series of 2025 in joining all local government units and regional line agencies in Davao region to continually support efforts in line with a sustaining Davao region's insurgency-free status and mandating its implementation in the city of Mati under the supervision of committee peace and order and public safety to be discussed under unassigned business suspended House rules. Proposed Resolution C authored by the Honorable Pang, a resolution institutionalizing the Filipino brand of service excellence in all government offices and tourism-related establishments in the city of Mati to be discussed under unassigned business suspended House rules. For communications and messages, Communication Number 106 CS 2025, letter from Honorable Joel Mayo G. Almario, City Mayor, addressed to the Honorable Sangguneang Panglusod members through Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girabat, City Vice Mayor, requesting for the passage of a resolution authorizing the city mayor to enter into a memorandum agreement between the Department of Environment and Natural Resources Region 11 and the city government of Mati for the establishment of an automated weather station within the Mayor FGR Park and Baywalk referred to the Chairman Committee Environmental Protection, the Honorable Tara Maripat Gaeta, to be discussed under unassigned business suspended House rules. Communication Number 107, request for accreditation of their association from Pasada Sakaliyo to the FINRA San Mati referred to the Honorable Antopuesto, Chairman Committee on Agrarian Reform, Cooperative and Livelihood, as manifested by the Honorable Antopuesto. This will be discussed under unassigned business suspended House rules. Communication Number 108 CS 2025 from Punoong barangay Ivan L. Gias of barangay Dawan, addressed to the Honorable Members Sangguneang Panglusod through Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girabat, City Vice Mayor regarding barangay ordinance Number 2025-002 referred to Chairman Committee on Oversight, Ordinance, and Legal Matters, the Honorable Sena Princess Campos. That's all for communications, Mr. Chair. For committee report, committee report number 14 by the Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics, and Accountabilities to be reported by the Honorable Antopuesto.
Honorable Antopuesto is recognized.
Thank you, Presiding Officer. Uh, Mr. Presiding Officer, this representation would like to render the committee report Number 14-2025 filed by the Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics, and Accountabilities regarding the, on the confirmation of Mrs. Virginia M. Albao as head of the Office of the Senior Citizens Affairs. I believe, Mr. Presiding Officer, all members were given a copy of this committee report. Now I move for the adoption of the committee report Number 14-2025. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Antopuesto for the adoption of Committee Report Number 14 Series of 2025. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Rabat. If there are no more objections nor further discussions, Committee Report Number 14 is hereby adopted. Please proceed with the next item.
Committee Report Number 15 by the Committee on Social Welfare and Community Development by the Honorable Campos.
Wait, a few minutes recess is declared. Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, this representation from the Committee on Social Welfare and Community Development would like to render Committee Report Number 15. I move for the adoption of the committee report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the adoption of Committee Report Number 15 Series of 2025. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Pabio. If there are no objections, Committee Report Number 15 is hereby adopted. Please proceed with the next item.
Committee Report Number 16 by the Committee on Barangay Affairs to be reported by the Honorable Makaubos.
Honorable Makaubos is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thank everybody has a copy of the Committee Report Number 16. Nabi copy antanan? So this representation as chairman of the Committee on Barangay Affairs, together, together with the whole composition of this committee, would like to pass and render Committee Report Number 16 Series of 2025. The recommendation of this committee as stated in the Committee Report Number 16 Series of 2025 relative to the proposed subdivision of barangay central into three distinct barangays is to endorse this matter to the Office of the Congressman, Cino D. Almario, of Second Congressional District of Davao Oriental, for a possible filing available in Congress for the subdivision of barangay central into three distinct barangays. With this, I move for the adoption of Committee Report Number 16.
Thank you, there is a motion. Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Makaubos for the adoption of Committee Report Number 16 Series of 2025, seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, Committee Report Number 16 is hereby adopted.
Committee Report Number 17 by the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure to be reported by Honorable Pabio.
Thank you, Honorable Pabio is recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all.
Good afternoon.
Bidetin happy birthday to our Esp. Secretary, Jobim Abine.
Thank you. Bidetin happy birthday, Heysek.
Committee Report Number 17 is a product of Communication Number 103 Series of 2025 filed by the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure. Honorable Presiding Officer, I move for the adoption Committee Report Number 17.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pabio for the adoption of Committee Report Number 17 Series of 2025, seconded by all. Are there any discussions? If none, hearing no objections, Committee Report Number 17 is hereby adopted. Please proceed with the next item.
For calendar business, the unfinished business, business for today for second reading, proposed resolution by the Honorable Antopuesto, product of Committee Report Number 14.
Honorable Antopuesto is recognized.
Again, Mr. Chair, thank you. In behalf of the Committee on Good Governance and Public Ethics and Accountabilities, I would like to move for a passage of a resolution confirming the appointment of Mrs. Virginia M. Albao as head of the Office of the Senior Citizens Affairs for one term equivalent to three years' term in the non-renewable with a salary ever, with a salary equivalent of TSG-10. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Antopuesto for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Rabat Gaeta. If there are no objections or further discussions, motion is carried. Please proceed with the next item.
Proposed resolution by the Honorable Pabio, product of Committee Report Number 17.
Honorable Pabio is recognized.
Thank you again, Honorable Presiding Officer. The whole composition of Committee Public Works and Infrastructure, I move for the passage as a resolution authorizing Honorable Joel Almario, City Mayor, to sign for in behalf of the city government of Mati, the contract of agreement with the domeran construction and supply represented by its proprietor, Mr. Raol Dines Arcastanida, for the improvements of the Mayo Porok 19 Bagrimco Farm-to-Market Road 1.5 kilometers Impra project. I do so move, Honorable Presiding Officer.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Pabio for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Rabat Gaeta. Hearing no objections nor further discussions, motion is carried. Please proceed.
Proposed ordinance Number 646 CS 2025 for discussion for second reading, product of Committee Report Number 15 by the Honorable Campos.
Thank you. Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, product of the committee report as well, I move for the approval of City Ordinance Number 646 Series of 2025 and ordinance strengthening curfew regulations for minors from 10:00 PM to 4:00 AM in the city of Mati through inter-agency interventions. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of, for the approval of the City Ordinance 646 on its second reading, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the passage or approval of City Ordinance Number 646 on its second reading. Members to second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Antopuesto, ah, Honorable Pabio. Are there any discussions? Honorable Antopuesto.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and the Honorable Campos. This is not a sign of objection. I would like to assign a question. Although I am a member of the committee, the committee cited here, I was read but in this.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Did you bring up, thank you, Honorable, there's a point of order by Honorable Campos as we agreed that if you have questions and you're a member, did you attend the committee meeting?
Yes.
Did you raise that question you're about to raise during the committee?
I did not raise, ano, but in the inside, there is a portion of the ordinances that there is no cash in bawo, walang ipalabas na pera. But in the committee report, the CSSDO confirmed that we have no enough staff and we need to hire. So this is a contradict in this, ano, because we did not discuss that because I think, I did not read, this is the only time that I read this, ano, at the portion is walang, walang budget na ilabas ang ordinance sa neto. But in the committee report, may nung po tayong hiring of staff.
During the committee meeting, was that same ordinance that is printed today presented?
Yes, but did not discuss.
A few minutes recess is declared.
But in the committee report, may nung po tayong hiring of staff.
During the committee meeting, was that same ordinance that is printed today presented?
Yes, but did not discuss.
A few minutes recess is declared.[568.79]
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Good afternoon, especially to the author of this, the principle of this ordinance number 646 series of 2025. This is not opposing, this is not questioning, but I would like to request to the proponent to emphasize this article or section, Article 3, Corfew Regulation and Exemption under the Section 6, Exemptions, Paragraph D. Please try to, please to emphasize this. Kung sa'ipasabot, I will read. When the minor is engaged in unauthorized employment activity or going to or returning home from the same place to employment activities without any detour or stop. So ako lang here, kung sa'atu ang proponent of this ordinance para ma-elaborate niya, para maput on the record po't because basi magkuntradikta sa labor code din na sa minor age, no? So in fact, nagkaistorya na may ka-kanina. Ako na siyang ka-question na sound na wala pa nag-so good ang section, pero gusto lang ako para maput on the record po't sa ihaang side. Thank you, Honorable Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Valera, Honorable Campos.
Mr. Chair, I just like to clarify, it was Article 3, Section 6, Paragraph D. When the minor is engaged in unauthorized employment activity or going to or returning home from the same place of employment activity without any detour or stop. If I'm not mistaken, the question of the Honorable Valera is that why is this exemption put into the ordinance where for minors should not work by nature? But in our educational system, Mr. Chair, we already have the K-12 program. And we allow our K-12 program to have OJT's outside the school. So I believe they should be enjoined in the exemption because although they are 18 below, they are exercising their right to education through their OJT. So dilip na'to sila dapat dakpon kung nagulit lang sila gikan silang OJT or gikan sa school because naapoy as someone who had studied in Dorso as well, my schedule there was night class before and 10:00 PM mahuman ang klase. So when you go home as well, di mangyud na 10, kaningulakaw sa school, 10 pong kamakauli. So we should provide them equal protection din. Nadilip po'd sila dakpon as a curfew ordinance na'to. Nagikan lang man ta sila sa school o gikan sa ilang OJT, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Campos, Honorable Valera.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Thank you, Honorable Chair and Campos.
Thank you, thank you. So pasabot kung gikan o school, gikan o OJT, 17 years old, pauli dakpon sa official kung ma-approved na gikan yu'tsak OJT, exempted siya sa curfew.
Honorable Chair, ang ako apod ato gi pasabot na maput on the record lang sa atong proponent tungod atong Paragraph D under Section 6 kay kitugutan manggudre na adri kitugutan ang minority edad na kung gikan sa trabaho where in fact, diya sa according sa tong law sa Labor Code, wala man kitugutan ang minority edad na magtrabaho. Pero iyan gi explain nga sa bagong balao karota sa iskwela nga K-12, dun na na'y mga tarong grade 12 ba'to, I think na pwede na sila manarbaho evento sila na minor age. So thank you, Honorable Vice Chair.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Valera. Thank you for clarifying, Honorable Campos. Are there any more questions from the members? If there are none, please proceed.
Mr. Chair, just an additional. Although it was called the point of order, I believe the the questions of the honorable, my honorable Vice Chairman of the of the Committee on Social Welfare was still valid, no? It's just a matter of the technicalities of raising the question at hand that is not qualified based on our internal rules. But his suggestion regarding the implementation of these ordinance regarding the staffing pattern and regarding the hiring of new employees to cater this ordinance is that I would also like to reiterate the legal basis of this under our 7160 or the Local Government Code, that the power to make legislative actions and make ordinances and resolutions are vested in the local city sanggunian. And after all, the implementation of the said ordinance will be implemented by the local Chief Executive's office. And with that also, Mr. Chair, the mayor have to exercise the general supervision and control over the programs, over the implementation of the ordinances and the activities of the city government. Wherefore, if there is the need really from the like CSWDO or other agencies to have additional staffs, then this will be implemented through our local chief executive which budgets and enjoined by the law based on the Local Government Code that he or she is required to implement the law as a duty to the citizens of Mati City. So this ordinance from our Legislative Department shall be forwarded to our city mayor and the city mayor will also forward it to the task force, which are we have a committee on local child protection. We also have a committee for anti-trafficking and violence against women and children. All of those committee will be enjoined in the implementation of this task force. Either way, although our work as a legislator is just to legislate, it is a valid suggestion and with that, we will also be pleading to our local chief executive to add additional staffing if there is really a need to add additional staffing. But it is not our job to implement after all this said ordinance, Mr. Chair. And if there are no objections or further questions regarding this ordinance, I move for the passage of City Ordinance Number 646 on its second reading, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the passage of City Ordinance Number 646 on its second reading. Members to second her motion. Seconded by Honorable Masagnay, hearing no objections nor discussions. City Ordinance Number 646 is approved on its second reading. Thank you. Please proceed to the next item.
For an assigned business, Mr. Chair, subject for suspension of House rules, we have
Honorable Campos is recognized. Suspension, committee as a whole.
Mr. Chair, I move for the suspension of House rules and for this August body to be convened into a committee of the whole, Mr. Chair, I do so move.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the suspension of House rules. At the same time, the conversion of this body into committee as a whole. Members to second her motion. Seconded by Honorable Masagnay, House rules are now suspended and we are converted into committee as a whole. Honorable Antopuesto is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer. The floor now is open for the discussion of the Communication Number 107 thus 2025 for the application of the re-accreditation of Pasada Sakali to the Federation of Mati City Incorporated.
Thank you, the floor is now open for any discussions regarding Communication 107 as presented by Honorable Antopuesto. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you. Now I move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation regarding the communication for the accreditation and the said association as presented a while ago, I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Antopuesto for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for Communication 107. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Rabat Gaeta, hearing no objections, motion is carried. Honorable Rabat Gaeta is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This pertains to Communication 106, Series of 2025, regarding the memorandum of agreement between the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, Region 11, and our City Government of Mati for the establishment of an automated weather station within the Mayor FGR Park and Baywalk. So the floor is now open for any discussions or queries pertaining to the said communication, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, the floor is now open for any discussions regarding Communication 106 as presented by Honorable Rabat Gaeta. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So before I move for its adoption, Mr. Chair, just an added information to everybody. I have here the accomplishment report coming from the DNR as to the status of the automated weather station, which is operational na siya since December, uh, since December 19 of 2024. The reason for this communication is because of the change of admin. So there is also a need to change the signatories of the MOA, Mr. Chair. So as of now, the automated weather station has been completed on December 19, 2024 and has been already transmitting data to our DNR region and has also been given na ang atuang siyendro as to the datas collected by the automated weather station, Mr. Chair. So if there are no more discussions or question, I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation for Communication Number 106, Series of 2025, I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Rabat Gaeta for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for Communication 106. Seconded by Honorable Makaubos, hearing no objections, motion is carried. Honorable Pang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The floor is now open for the discussion of Resolution Letter C, a resolution instituting the Filipino brand of service excellence to all government offices and tourism-related establishment in the city of Mati.
Thank you, the floor is now open for any discussions regarding Resolution C presented by Honorable Pang. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation, I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Pang for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for proposed Resolution C. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Makaubos, hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Bordon is recognized. For proposed Resolution A and B. Ayaw lang isabay ang discussions, isa-isa nato.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This presentation would like to move for a passage of a resolution directing the establishment of barangay pest keeping action team, monitoring outpost in identified high-risk areas to support the implementation of Ordinance Number 645, Series of 2025, anti-drug racing ordinance of the city of Mati, prescribing minimum standards, staffing, operations, coordinations, reporting and funding mechanisms, therefore, I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, the floor is first open for discussions regarding proposed Resolution A. Are there any discussions, proposed Resolution A? If there are none, please proceed to the motion for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation.
I now move for the passage of
Few minutes recess is declared. Ano lang sa cap?
Okay, Mr. Chair, I now move for the adoption of committee as a whole of the recommendation, a resolution, uh, letter E.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Bordon for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for proposed Resolution A. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Campos, hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Please proceed, Honorable Bordon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This presentation would like to move for a passage of a resolution adapting and enforcing the Regional Development Council, Resolution Number 9, Series of 2025, enjoining all local government units and regional line agencies in Davao Region to continually support airports in the line sustaining Davao Region's insurgency free status and mandating its implementation in the city of Mati under the supervision of the Committee on Peace and Order and Public Safety. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, the floor is now open first for discussions regarding proposed Resolution B as presented by Honorable Bordon. If there are no discussions, please proceed. Committee as a whole recommendation for proposed Resolution B.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole of the recommendation, uh, of the resolution, letter B.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Bordon for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for proposed Resolution B. Seconded by Honorable Valera, hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Thank you, Honorable Bordon. We are done with all requested communications or resolutions under the committee as a whole. Honorable Campos is now recognized. For conversion of this body back into plenary.
Mr. Chair, I move that this August body be back into plenary, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the conversion of this body back into plenary, seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now back into plenary. Honorable Antopuesto is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Now I move for a resolution approving the application for the re-accreditation of Pasada Sakali to the Federation of Mati City Incorporated. I do so move.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Antopuesto for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Pabio, hearing no objections or further discussions, this motion is carried. A few minutes recess is declared. Honorable Rabat Gaeta is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Product of Communication Number 106, Series of 2025, filed by the Committee on Environmental Protection, I now move for a passage of a resolution authorizing the Honorable City Mayor, Joel Mayo Z. Almario to enter into and sign for and in behalf of the City Government of Mati a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, Regional Office 11, for the establishment of an automated weather station within the Puada Bay Protected Landscape and Seascape located at the MFGR Mati Park and Baywalk, City of Mati, Davao Oriental, I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Rabat Gaeta for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by Honorable Pang, hearing no objections or discussions, this motion is carried. Honorable Bordon is recognized. Passage, oh, sorry, Honorable Pang is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for a passage of a resolution instituting the Filipino brand of service excellence to all government offices and tourism-related establishment in the city of Mati. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Pang for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Makaubos, hearing no objections, this motion is carried.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Honorable Bordon is recognized. For Resolutions A and B. You may lump sum now the passage, kung ano naman tag-discuss.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I now move for the passage of the resolution directing the establishment of barangay pest keeping action team, monitoring out, outpost in identified high-risk areas to support implementation of Ordinance Number 645, Series of 2025, anti-drug racing ordinance of the city of Mati, prescribing minimum standards, trapping operations, coordinations, reporting and funding mechanism, therefore, I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Bordon for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Pabio, hearing no objections, this motion is carried. Please proceed for Resolution B.
I now move for the passage of Resolution Letter B. I do so move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Bordon for a passage of a resolution. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by Honorable Rabat Gaeta, hearing no objections, this motion is carried. We are still under suspended House rules, Honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, I move that the House rules be reinstated, Mr. Chair, I do so move.
Thank you, there is a motion by the Honorable Campos for the reinstatement of House rules. Seconded by all the members, here are no objections. The suspended House rules are now lifted. Please proceed to the next item.
No proposed resolution ordinance for third reading. For announcement, other matters?
Thank you, are there any announcements, other matters to be discussed by the members? Tama ba, Conseil Chair, madayaw mabuhay ang greetings na sa resolution? Madayaw mabuhay. Mabuhay og madayaw. Gikan kansekyu itong note, like paliktad. And then everyone is invited for the local legislative awards sa September 19, 2:00 PM here in the session hall. It's the evaluating body that evaluates us on the resolutions and ordinances that we passed during the 7th City Council, no, no, daily 8th City Council, so but all council members are still invited, 2:00 PM, just for the opening program. But some of you will be in Davao for the Philippine Counselors League, no? It's okay, ang important lang naman is the SPSEC and the ordinances are prepared. Are there any announcements still? If there are none, please proceed to the next item.
We the invitation for the members of local finance committee, Mr. Chair, to Mrs. Ann Margat Selva. And after they receive the letter, Mr. Chair, this is for announcement. They submitted a formal communication and I had furnished the copy of her reply to all SP members regarding our invitation.
Thank you, did all SP members receive the copy from the local finance committee na forward sa inyong office last week? Na forward sa inyong office, Karun, and the reason why they cannot attend today's session? Thank you, if there are no other announcements or other matters, Honorable Masagnay is recognized for the adjournment of today's session and closing prayer.
Thank you, Chair. Next time, bow our heads in the presence of God.
Please rise for the closing prayer.
Amen. Lord, Almighty, we are glad to express our gratitude for your enlightenment, for the topics and subjects that were discussed today in order for the betterment of our people. All of this we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Masagnay for the adjournment of today's session, seconded by all session adjourned.